Now, you're recording this. Welcome, everybody, to the Brandy Area Chamber of Commerce's candidates forum 2021. We're starting out with our select board candidates. I want to read from my thing that I think that Bernie sent out, but I want to read it right. Select Board shall have the general supervision of the affairs of the town and shall cause to be performed all duties. My sound's a little muffled. Thanks, Pat. I'll speak a little closer to the microphone. The Select Board shall have the general supervision of the affairs of the town and shall cause to be performed all duties required of the towns. That is the statute around Select Board, the governor of Select Boards. It's going to be a friendly and orderly affair. We're all neighbors. We're all friends. We all care about Brandon. This is not a referendum on national politics. This is an opportunity for folks to get to know how the candidates would represent their friends and neighbors in their interest on the Brandy Select Board. Candidates will have three minutes for an opening statement. They don't have to take them all, but they have three minutes for an opening statement. The questions will be sent by way of chat. I'm going to have you send them. Thought I'd be in a room with Bernie, but I don't think it'd be in a room with Bernie. I don't trust him quite honestly. But no, if you want to send, uh, send questions to me, but in the chat, and I'll answer them in order of the way they receive. And again, frame them. They need to be framed so they are answerable by all candidates. That's the most important thing. Like, this is not, you know, you're asking a question that can be answered of all candidates. So, please, when you're framing that, I'm going to try to reframe your question if it's direct specifically. All right, guys, see one come in. So, all right. So again, for everybody, this is, uh, this is where we're going to start, and we've decided we didn't flip a coin. We decided we'd go in alpha order. And our first person to have the opening statement will be Ms. Lindsay Burke. Lindsay, I'm going to unmute you. And you have been asked to unmute, and you're muted. Go ahead.
Thanks, Bill. Good evening. My name is Lindsay Burke, and I'm calling in from Rossiter Street, just around the corner from Bill and Bernie. Just going to set my timer. Who I'd like to thank for hosting the forum this evening. For those who I haven't met, I'd like to tell you a little about myself. I've worn a few different hats in my life: advertising executive, nonprofit manager, business owner, all of which have given me unique insight into what makes an organization succeed. After graduating from Penn State with a degree in advertising, business, and Spanish, I worked in the corporate business world in DC and New York City for seven years. Recognizing the corner office and boardroom lifestyle wasn't for me. I shifted gears and moved to South America, where I found myself volunteering at a disaster relief organization. It was here I learned the power of a resilient local community. It was also here where I met my husband, Matt, an Australian, who shared my love of cooking, nature, and adventure. After working for a few years as international guides, we started our own business focused on food and agriculture. We have led successful study abroad programs with universities from across the country. By 2015, we are ready to find a new home together. We came to Vermont when Acorn, or the Addison County Relocalization Network, hired me. Now, as Executive Director of Acorn, I work to strengthen the local food and agricultural economy while addressing food insecurity and farm viability. Through my work with Acorn, I've learned the importance of communication and relationship building across sectors, from farmers and school food service managers to healthcare providers. As part of this role, I manage the Pharmacy Food is Medicine program, which provides free weekly shares of local fruit and vegetables to families who are experiencing diet-related illness or food insecurity. This past year, I've been working with Middlebury College students to create the new Eat Local Vermont app, which just launched last week. You should all download it for free right now in the Apple App and Google Play stores. I also understand the power of marketing. I'm a marketing consultant for local farms and a new solar community project in Bristol. I consult for Live Green Vermont, an online resource for local businesses that help our communities transition to clean energy. I would love to help market Brandon to attract new families to our town. I serve on Bravo, Brandon's restorative justice committee, and sit on the Addison County Hunger Council, both of which create important relationships and build trust. I'm dedicated to strengthening, strengthening our local community. My leadership style is based on collaboration and making well-informed decisions. I believe we need to focus on communication between community groups to build community self-reliance and provide space to listen to the youth, the elders, the longtime Brandonites, and the new arrivals. Speaking of new arrivals, in 2019, my husband was naturalized as an American citizen right here at the Necheby School, with fourth and fifth graders singing joyous songs of welcome and unity. I've seen the beauty of a welcoming Brandon and know we can collectively do even better. We are stronger together. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping it right in three minutes. Nice job. Next up, we're going to ask Ally Brier.
Great. Can you hear me? Good. All right. So I just first want to thank the organizers of this forum, Bill and Bernie, for putting this on, and really everything that you do to make Brandon such a great place to live. My name's Ally Brier. Alexandra is what you'll see on the ballot. And I also really want to thank the people who are here tonight. It's amazing to see such a huge turnout for Select Board. It shows that we have a community that really cares. And I want to thank the Select Board and the town for all the work that they've done to make us through this huge construction project and to help build the Brandon that we know and love. From the historic downtown and art galleries, the access to nature, and then tight-knit community, it's a town with amazing social capital, or it's really easy to be active in the community. For instance, I'm in the Planning Commission, which has been a truly rewarding experience. Brandon is a hidden gem in Vermont. And after working in local, state, and federal government over the last seven years, I understand that being a public servant is often thankless, difficult work with little to no pay. And I love Brandon, but that doesn't mean I can't want it to be better. We're at a point where it's important to be thinking about our future and what kind of community we want to be moving forward, especially as our population has declined since 2010. To better understand what Brandonites would like to see moving forward, we put out a survey, and we talked to a lot of community leaders throughout town. And there's a lot of themes that have emerged, and thank you to everyone who participated, and I just want to focus on a few. The first was a strong desire for better and different community engagement. In my years of public service, I know that we cannot do a one-size-fits-all approach to public participation, and we can't assume that everyone feels safe attending or speaking up at meetings, especially if the group that they're presenting to doesn't look like them. Yet, this isn't an issue that's unique to Brandon. I'm a consultant for an organization called Engaging Local Government Leaders, and I work with cities all across the country that are struggling with some of these same issues. We hear both the difficulties and the innovative solutions, and I can bring this national lens to Brandon. The second theme was a desire for increased communications with the community. In my current role at the Health Department, I am a communications coordinator, and I'm serving on the COVID-19 response. In our case, accessible, widely distributed information that's available in a broad array of channels is not only important, it's a matter of life and death. We're currently doing among the best in the nation and receive accolades for our work. To be fair, you'll never get everybody with your communications, and some people always feel like you're missing them. Yet, we can intentionally think about how we currently communicate and strategically think about how to improve. And lastly, was cultivating our existing partnerships and strengthening other partnerships both around town and across the state. We're never siloed in the work that we do. While getting my master's in public administration with a focus in community and regional planning, I worked for US Senator Ron Wyden's office in Oregon. We worked with diverse partners, both locally and across the region, from business interests to environmental groups to agriculture, to local government and elected officials. And we connected groups with federal grants and programs that may have been confusing or complicated. And I can bring this partnership-building expertise to Brandon. Thank you all, and I look forward to talking with you all tonight.
Thank you, Ally. Moving on, our next candidate in alpha order is Seth Hopkins. I'm going to ask Seth to unmute.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being part of determining the direction that our town will take in the next year. I've lived in Brandon for 16 years with my wife, Olia. She was also naturalized at the Necheby School as an American citizen back in 2010. And we've had three daughters born here in our home since we've been living in Brandon. Brandon's the talk of Vermont lately, for a laundry list of all the right reasons. We've earned high marks from Vermont Digger for our work to improve our town's financial condition, rising to be among the best in Vermont. Brandon has been in the news for positive community-building successes this year, from reverse Christmas parades to our accessible-to-all-summer-concert series. And to me, that was one of the almost normal highlights of the pandemic summer, and to helping out those in our community who are in need. We see entrepreneurs making a bet on Brandon by opening businesses here. We've gone on the record as a Select Board and as a town standing for inclusion, and we mean it. We have used the tools from the legislature to respond to COVID while improving access and transparency of public meetings. And the Select Board has been, and I trust will continue to be, a helpful partner in the work of many people who are making a positive impact in the community. I thank the voters for electing me as the Select Board in 2015 and for returning me to it yearly since then. The Board and I appreciate your patience through the rebuilding years, both road rebuilding and non-road rebuilding, and your continued support and encouragement of positive momentum for Brandon. I'm optimistic about our future. I'm in a good mood about Brandon, and I hope that you are too. We've come a long way together, thanks to sustained effort from many folks over many years. I'm proud to have devoted a great amount of time to serving as a board member and board chair during these years of rebuilding and relaunching Brandon, and ask for your support to keep me part of your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. And we have Mr. Markowski. Mr. Markowski, unmute you. Mike Markowski.
Yeah, how's that better?
Perfect.
All right, well, I'm Mike Markowski. I want to thank everybody for being here, for Bill and Bernie for putting this all on. A lot of you may know me, a lot of you may not. You may remember me from the adventurous Box Culver project going through town that actually, a month and a half after it was built, actually saved the town flooding again. I like to consider myself kind of a realist. I know that there's a lot of plans that can be made, a lot of plans that are tried to follow through, and a lot of plans that can't be followed through. And my goal is to be able to look at all of those plans, listen to everything that I have that people want to say to me, and bring it forward and try to make a great town even better. I had a big part in the Park Street reconstruction. I orchestrated all the work going on there. And I think that came out to be a very, very beautiful street, and I think there's room for a lot more of those streets in Brandon. So, um, I mean, I didn't write a whole story down here, but this is basically me in a nutshell. And, you know, I'm looking to bring forward to the town. I know my infrastructure. I've worked with a lot of many towns throughout the state and a lot of different projects. Again, I just want to thank everybody for being here. I can't wait to hear what you guys have to ask.
Thank you, Mike. All right, and so I'm just going to need to permit a few more people in. People that are tardy to the party. I'll make the announcement once again, that, again, this is an open forum. I'll be reading all the questions. I've asked that people put them in the chat. I've already gotten one question by way of chat. However, I've only gotten one, so basically, I think that the chat isn't working, or people don't understand the concept. So, once again, if you have a question that, one, you have a question, you're going to put it in the chat. However, before you put it in the chat, you want to make sure that you frame it as such that all four candidates have an opportunity to respond to that question. Okay, so with that, the first question, and we're going, we are going to go in, since I made, go first, and then I'll say, okay, we're going to go in the order of our B, C, D, A. So this question is, what is your vision for Brandon in the coming years? And the first person to ask this, to answer this question will be Brier, Hopkins, Markowski, and Burke. So, Brier, you are up. You have up to two minutes to answer this question. Let me unmute you again. Here we go.
Thanks, Bill. That's a great question. I, we, we did a survey, as I had mentioned, with people around town to gather what people love about this town. And we heard, you know, some of the same things I mentioned, the music, the art, the outdoor recreation opportunities, the rec department, the New England look and feel, and the people. I think that comes up over and over again, is how much we love each other and taking care of each other. And so, you know, Brandon has come a long way, and yet we know that we have an opportunity to do even more, especially when it comes to social equity. So, you know, I'm envisioning a town where there's more affordable housing options, where everyone is food secure, and we're really thinking about the long-term impacts of COVID and how we can ensure food security for our town. Where young people are moving to town, but we're also having an environment where older people are able to age in place both comfortably and safely and have all the amenities that they need to live here. And I'm passionate about creating a more welcoming community and encouraging people with diverse backgrounds to move to our town. You know, the Select Board did institute an inclusion policy, but that is just a start. We really have to be thinking more about all of our policies and ordinances in all of our town departments, from land use and zoning to the work at our schools and our police station to ensure that these are all inclusive and equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next answerer will be Mr. Hopkins. I'm going to unmute you.
Thank you. Thanks for the good question. My instinct for a vision for Brandon is that there's nothing that's wrong with Brandon that can't be fixed by what's, by more of what's right with Brandon already. I basically think that it's a let Brandon be Brandon, and don't try to turn Brandon into Woodstock, and don't try to turn Brandon into Williston. Turn, you know, let Brandon be what it has been, which is a community that I think has done a great job at intergenerational weaving together. I think that some of the most wonderful experiences I've had in Brandon have been experiences like the summer concert series, where we do have folks who are coming, who are mobility impaired, who listen to the concert by opening the door of their van, their accessible van. And we have, on the other end of the spectrum, we've got some families with kids much younger than mine, little toddlers running around, kind of learning their way about how to, you know, play with others that they don't know, and listen to the music, and their parents are having a good time. I think those kinds of community-building things are important. I recognize, I was a history teacher before we came to Vermont and started doing the tour thing. And in history, one of the things we learned is that history doesn't start when we're born. And I would extend that to say that, you know, Brandon doesn't start when we come on the scene. I want to be respectful of what Brandon is and what attracted me to move to Brandon and not feel like I should move to Brandon and then immediately change it into something else that wasn't the Brandon that attracted me. I think that, you know, Brandon's got some wonderful things going for it. We do have a lot of volunteers. I think that all, all those volunteers should be commended and encouraged, and I look at my Select Board service as just one way to volunteer for Brandon. And I'm glad to partner with many different groups in getting things done for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Mike Markowski, you'll be the next person to answer this question. And I'm asking you to unmute. And go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you for the question. I think a common concept for everybody is going to be more affordable housing for, for all walks of life that come into Brandon. I mean, myself, I have three kids. And I'm going to be right up front. It's not the easiest, the most affordable place to live. But there is, you know, there are different ways that we can probably come together as a board and make that better. Another thing, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to envision kind of kids' programs. Get the kids involved in the town more, volunteer, and get them outside. And then, like, like I was saying earlier, I have a lot of, a lot of infrastructure background, like on the roads and, and projects that caliber. I'd like to see, you know, more people-friendly streets that they can walk down, visit, visit house to house. You know, I used to love coming up to Park Street just for, just for taking the kids trick-or-treating. You know, streets like that, that are kid-friendly and able to get around. So, other than that, I mean, it's, for me, a lot of it's about the kids and, it's an affordable, affordable living in the town.
Thank you, Mike. Last up, we have Lindsay Burke.
Thank you. So like Ally mentioned, we did send us, send out a survey to ask our community what their visions are, and a lot of that was echoed by what Mike just said. And we received a goldmine of information, and I thought it would help to, to read some of those out to you. So here's what you told us. We envision a Brandon that has recovered from the pandemic and construction with a walkable downtown, alive with thriving businesses. We envision a Brandon with folks who have lived here for decades and understand the heritage of living in a small community with traditions. This Brandon encourages our young to stay and make careers here, and is attractive for younger families to move here with low and moderately priced housing. We envision a Brandon with a police station that has a diversity of skills with a social worker for community needs. We envision a Brandon that encourages and supports recreation with local hunting, fishing, snowmobiling, skiing, and hiking. We envision a Brandon that provides a high quality of life for all residents, especially seniors on fixed incomes. We envision a Brandon with a Select Board that is more representative of our community, that engages its citizens and actively listens to the taxpayers. We envision a Brandon that is a beacon of food arts, healing arts, craftspeople, farmers, and educators, where everyone is valued and celebrated regardless of color, sexual preference, or financial abundance. These are our neighbor's words, and this is our vision. So the combination of my experience working with small communities internationally, locally, volunteering with local community groups, it's, these have given me the skills that I need to help bring this vision to fruition. And I won't be doing it alone. I'll be doing it with everybody in the community. So let's do this work together.
Thank you, Lindsay. And we have made our way through our first question. Congratulations to everybody. And we got other questions while you guys were speaking. So, next question. Could you name one immediate action you wish to take if you are elected or reelected? And this question starts with Seth, then to Mike, then to Ally, I'm sorry, then to Lindsay, then to Ally, Hopkins, Markowski, Burke, and Brier. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, an immediate action to take if you're reelected is always tough for someone running for reelection, because the question is, well, why didn't you do it already? Right? So, that's a, it's a good question, though. I think in terms of priorities for next year, my, one of my top priorities, which I would say would be an immediate action that we could take as a board, is to come to some policy decision regarding the board's appointments of the various volunteer boards and committees that run the town. So this has been something that we've kind of done on an ad hoc basis, and that's probably not been the, the best way for us to do it. So that's a change that I would like to see us make, is to settle on a policy where we have a process that's transparent and open, and people can, people will be aware of it ahead of time, so that when a board vacancy occurs, they're able to weigh for themselves what their commitment would be, and they're able to know what the process will be. That's just a courtesy to them and a fairness factor to them in terms of someone who's volunteering to serve the town as a commissioner, or as a board member, or as an officer that the Select Board appoints. And that's what, that's one of the important things the Select Board does. It's, it's the budget, policy, and personnel. And that, that kind of overlaps in policy and personnel. So that would be my, that would be something that I think we could get done probably in March, if I'm returned to the board.
Thank you, Seth. The next step, we have Markowski. Mike Markowski, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
I'm already unmuted.
Oh, perfect. Go ahead.
Immediate action is, is, you know, for a new member, I guess my immediate action would be to go in and learn the other members of the board, how they think, how they, how they communicate, how they work with the, the different entities of the town. As for taking immediate action, I don't know if you really can as a new member until you learn how everything else works. And if you go into, into this as a new member with a, with a agenda of things just to come up and change, nothing's going to happen in the heart of you. Let's be real. I mean, so yeah, I guess my immediate action would be to learn as much of the other members as possible, learn how they communicate, and, and then I can, I can base what I can do off of their communication.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, we have Lindsay. I'm asking her to mute.
Sure. So in addition to the surveys we sent out, Ally and I have also done a lot of listening sessions with leaders, community leaders from around town. And a common theme that emerged was the need to attract new families and younger families to town. And as a marketing expert and someone who moved to this town and who has driven across the country a few times, there's a few things we can do to market the town better. We can use social media and community-led grassroots campaigns to attract more visitors and residents. We can boost the school reviews on real estate websites. That was something that came up, and that's something that we could really do as a community. We can improve our Wikipedia photos. We can make sure that TripAdvisor and Yelp are up to date with all of the information, opening hours, photos, and good reviews for all of our restaurants and stores. And then, an example, a concrete example of how this would work. A couple of months ago, my husband realized that the town office had bad reviews on Google for whatever reason. So he did a simple front porch forum posting, asking people who had positive experiences to write their positive experiences on Google. And overnight, it went from two out of five stars to 4.7 out of five stars. We could do this as a community with all of our restaurants, all of our businesses, and really make Brandon attractive to people coming from outside the state or within the state. Just, you know, we're, I'm on an international agritourism task force, and it's trying to get more people to come to the Champlain Valley to visit our farms. So why not use Brandon as a stopping place for all those people who are going to come here? We could create a welcome kit for new renters and new homeowners that have all the amazing resources our town provides, like the walking trails, the quiz night, the meditation hour in the library, the great Brandon auction, the free summer concerts. There's so much this town offers. And this stuff is, it's low cost, or it's free. I mean, this is stuff we could do right away.
Thank you, Lindsay. And we have, next, we have Ally.
Great. You know, I would also echo what she said, of course, because we are running cooperatively, because we share so many of the same values. But I think, you know, as I said in my opening statement, I think a huge thing we could do immediately that is, you know, low cost, is really just thinking about how we are engaging with the community. As I mentioned, you know, we really can't do a one-size-fits-all and assume that we're speaking for all Brandon residents if we haven't actually asked them or have connected with community partners and stakeholders who know those groups or those organizations. You know, we could have quarterly meetings and have a better sense of, from community stakeholders, what they're hearing, what they want to see. You know, really, it's just having these, as Lindsay and I did, listening sessions, but more regularly and more intentionally with community groups, community organizers, other people in the community, our nonprofits. I just think that that's, it's such low-hanging fruit that we can take on pretty much right away. Thanks.
Thank you, Ally. Question number two is complete. Moving on. Question number three. This one will be first tackled by Markowski, Burke, Brier, Hopkins. How important is the issue of diversity in our Select Board? Mike, you are first.
Well, this is a good question, too, because I know it's been a debate for a long time. Diversity is very important. I mean, whether it be men versus women on the board, old versus young. I mean, there's a lot of different opinions by a lot of different people, and I think a good diverse board would, would suffice any, any, well, how do I want to say this? Any, any, um, problems that may occur for, for any, any conflict. So, I, I think diversity is very important. I mean, I know it's typically, we haven't had women on the board for years now. And we haven't had somebody younger than, I don't know, I don't want to throw ages out there, but I mean, I'm 35 years old. You know, and I, I'm assuming that I'm going to be one of the youngest running members on the board. So I think that's good, too, because you got a young perspective versus, versus the, I'll call them seasoned.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on, our next person to answer that question is Lindsay Burke.
It's a great question. I definitely think representation and diversity is important. We haven't had a woman on the Select Board in seven years, and there's only been four in the last 30. And this is a big enough issue to warrant seven days writing an article about it. We were, we were contacted by the state newspaper saying that we're one of seven races to watch in Vermont. So this is, this is a big deal. And when we talk about diversity, I want to clarify that Ally and I are only representing a different gender, an age bracket, income bracket, and occupation. There, these are just, these are just a few of the identities that could be better represented. There are others, such as race, ethnicity, sexual orientation. There are others such as race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and physical abilities that should be welcomed as well on, on our town's leadership. So as somebody who responded to our survey, this is good timing for younger voices and diversity. And this was, this has been echoed so many times. We didn't decide to just run. People asked us to run. They wanna see diversity. And if we zoom out from the local to the state to the federal level, the average age of our select board is 58.2 years. The governor is 62 years old, and the average age of our federal delegation is 77.3 years old. These are all older white men, and this is not diversity. So just like our planet's ecosystem, our soils and our farms, diversity makes us all healthier. Our society needs more cultural diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next up, Ally Breyer.
Yeah, this is a great question. It definitely has spurred some conversation on our front porch forum. And, you know, we, as a town, we lack racial and ethnic diversity. And after speaking to community leaders, this is not an accident. And this is not an accident across Vermont either. People have told us that in, here in Brandon, that Black Indigenous and other people of color have left due to racial harassment and microaggressions. Like, that is a real thing that has happened. We've seen, UVM came out with a recent study showing police bias in our police stops, even in Brandon, even in our tiny town. We've been told that LGBTQ youth face extreme bullying here, and it felt unsafe or unwelcome in Brandon. We, diversity, as Lindsay said, as us as two women who are younger is really just a start. We have to be thinking about all these other identities. Because representation is important. It leads to more empathetic decision-making. It allows people who have been traditionally left out of the political process to have their voices heard. And bringing women, as you mentioned, it's just a start, but it bring, will bring different valuable perspectives to the currently male-dominated process. And when we're, when we see in a newspaper article that people that current select board members feel that the select board is diverse enough, I just wonder what kind of message that sends to our community. And yeah, as Lindsay mentioned, this is a statewide issue. We have never sent, we were the only state never to send a female to Congress and all of the nation. So I think it's something that we're thinking about and especially if we wanna be a welcoming, inclusive, accessible community moving forward. We're at this cusp right now where we really need to be thinking about this and talking about this. Thanks.
Thank you, Ally. And next up, we have Seth Hopkins.
Thank you. So yeah, I believe that there is, there are different kinds of diversity and that there, the board is lacking in some forms of diversity. Absolutely. The board does not have gender diversity. The board does, the board does not have racial diversity. I would say the board has some socioeconomic diversity. The board has some life experience diversity. And the board has some, some faith diversity on it and lack of faith diversity on it. I guess a, a message that I kind of have taken with me my whole life has, has been that you don't make decisions about people based on what they look like. And I'm sure some of you think that sounds very, very naive, or it sounds like I'm not trying to answer the question. But that's really what I believe. I, I would vote for a select board that was made up entirely of women. No problem. If there were women candidates that I felt were gonna do a good job running the town better than other candidates. I, I think that sometimes we let our political affiliations or political preferences become our identity as people. And I, I would hate to do that. I would hate to see that happen in Brandon. I think your political identity is one of the things that makes you who you are. But I hope it's not the thing that defines who you are. And I hope the fact that I'm a 44-year-old white man with a receding hairline, I hope that that doesn't make me who I am. It's not who I feel I am. I have a lot of other identities, and those identities to me are a lot more important than the fact that I have pink skin and blue eyes.
Thank you, Seth. And we are through question three. Onto question number four. If I'm counting correctly. Okay, so this one, the order will be Hopkins, Breyer, Burke, Markowski. In light of the multiple animal welfare issues that arose in town last year, what is your position on the respective roles of the animal control officer and police and animal welfare managers? Hopkins, you have first. Go. I can unmute you. Where'd you go? You disappeared off my screen. By the way, this is the largest meeting I've ever presided over with 80, 86 participants. You guys, you guys are making history here in Brandon.
Thank you for the question. So animal control and animal welfare is a topic that probably consumed more of the energy and time of the select board than any other topic this past year. And we all learned something. I think nobody started that process knowing everything that they learned, knowing everything about animal welfare, animal control. So it's been a while since the question was asked now because there was a little bit of a fumble, but we were asking about the position, right? The, the board's position about animal welfare and animal control. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, no, that, that was all me. In light of the multiple animal welfare issues that arose in town last year, what is your position on the respective roles of animal control officer and police and animal welfare managers?
Okay, thank you for doing that. So I, I would say that the, my, my position on the positions is that the animal control officer and the police ought to be working in a collaborative way. It appears from what we have learned through the year that there are some things that an animal control officer can do, and we, as a board, want the animal control officer to be able to do that. There have been training issues related to COVID that prevented the right training, enough training to be made available to our animal control officer this past year, and that's, that's a regrettable situation. But we've also learned that there are some things that the Department of Agriculture regards as a law enforcement decision that is carried out by a law enforcement agency other than the animal control officer. So I want to remind people that, you know, we, we do have an animal control ordinance and an animal welfare priority. All of that was developed over the course of a year with many stakeholders and public hearings, and all of that remains in place. And most visibly recently, we have changed the person who is the animal control officer. We right now have an interim animal control officer while a permanent replacement is solicited. But we don't have a lesser commitment to animal welfare in Brandon. We don't have a lesser commitment as a board to animal control that the community needs as it, as it stated in the animal control ordinance that we worked together to draft as a community. All of that remains in place. We are looking to replace someone who was in the job with a different person in the job.
Thank you, Seth. I'm sorry to stop everybody there. And I've got, I've renamed you all. You're all at the top of my list now. So next person to answer this question will be Ally Breyer.
Great. As many people likely know, I'm a huge animal lover. We, my partner and I own a small farm sanctuary where we've rescued. We have over 20 animals that have come from abuse and neglect situations. Many of them are from the Hagerty Farm. And, and this is when I think we started realizing what lack of, I suppose, work, proactive work that we were doing as a town around animal welfare. That farm has, had had problems for, it was the third large seizure. And what happens when these animals are seized is they get sent to local farm sanctuaries where they take on almost the entire burden of the cost. It's, it's really disappointing that we've not been more proactive in some of these situations. And we did have a really fantastic animal control officer as of recently. And I think what we need to do as a town is really say, we do care about animal welfare and we care about the, the rights of those who have no voice. And I think, you know, that means paying them more, especially if they're acting in the capacity of sometimes it's a police, police-type work. So do we need to consider how we're, for funding the animal control officer so that they're able to be more proactive, so that they're able to get more training, so that they can work the number of hours that it seems takes to take care of animals in this, this town? And this is also like, I think for a long time, and what I've been hearing from going to many select board meetings is that there's a desire for it to be just a dog catcher. And I think we have the ability and capacity and the heart to do so much more. Thanks.
Thank you. And next up, we have Lindsay Burke. Lindsay Burke, I'm going to unmute you.
Right. So I'm not as familiar with the intricacies of this topic as Ally and Seth maybe, but I have followed it peripherally. And the first thing I would say is, could we change it from animal control to animal protection? Aren't we trying to protect the animals, not control them? But that aside, I do think it's important for there to be a specialized person outside of the police department who actually knows what to look for. A layperson looking at farm animals is not gonna know if an animal is being abused unless it's a severe case, which hopefully we're not letting things get to the severe cases. But I, I've heard that there has been at least one farm that has had multiple warnings and issues, and that, that farm, that farm, we're gonna use the term farm loosely, I don't think they're producing anything, has a problem with abusing and neglecting animals. And I've visited Ally and Michael's farm, and I've visited Kinder Way Sanctuary, where a lot of those neglected animals went. And those, those are nonprofits that are being funded by citizens and bootstrap organizations, and that, that doesn't make any sense. So if we can somehow create a position and a policy that protects the animals, like Ally said, they don't have voices, so we need to be the voices for them, then I think that we're all in a better place. It definitely needs to be more than just a dog catcher. Thanks.
Thank you, Lindsay. And last up, we have Mike Markowski.
On, on the positions of the, the animal control officer, I think there absolutely needs to be one, you know, in Brandon. And I think with something like that, the police force would be able to work more with them for the training and, and the knowledge and know-how, what to look for and how to, how to handle it. I think the appointment by the board is, is fine, as long as they're put through some sort of training with the, with the police force themselves. Just so, just so, you know, you're not knocking on doors, asking if the animals are fine, you know what to go in and look for. You know, so I think, I think the right person with, with extensive training on how to, how to acknowledge the, the animal cruelty and, and ordinances and everything that goes along with it needs to be addressed through training with the police force.
Thank you, Mike. And just pause that for a second. Just let everyone know, I am answering the question or asking the questions in order they're received. I'm also getting, so if you don't see them in the chat, it doesn't necessarily mean they haven't been sent to me direct message. So people have been doing both. The next question I see in my appearance would be for, looks like Neil. How would you address rising costs, including taxes, especially for fixed income residents? And this goes to Markowski, Burke, Hopkins, Breyer.
That's a, that's another really good question. Fixed income is, is it's a touchy subject around the state all the way around. I mean, addressing the rising costs, I mean, you've always got a, you've always got a factor in inflation of businesses, and especially right now with the pending possible $15 an hour minimum wage. That's gonna, that's gonna drop, drive these mom and pop shops that Brandon survives on to a higher cost to be able to pay their employees. So I mean, there's, there's limited things outside of, outside of taxes that we can do as a board to, to adjust the affordable, you know, the, the living costs of everything around us for fixing.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Next up, we have Lindsay Burke.
Yeah, this came up quite a lot in our survey too. Folks are really concerned about our, our elders and our seniors not being able to afford housing or food. And this, this strikes me pretty much at my core because I do a lot of work with food access. So I think one of the things that Brandon's done well is that one, is the 1% tax. I think that's a great step forward. And I know we, we use that money for different projects around town, and that helps alleviate some of the taxes to fixed income people specifically. Increasing tourism to town, I'm not saying create Woodstock. We can have our own brand, our own identity, and still increase local people, increase people coming to Brandon and paying that 1% tax. We can also attract new families. If we have more affordable housing, if you look online, I think there's three homes for sale that are cost between $100 and $200,000. It's, we've got a really tight housing market right now and a tight rental market. So if we have more people here, we can expand our tax base, and it's a less burden on individual families. And then my work with Acorn, we're, we're immediately trying to figure out how to get more local food accessible to people of all income brackets, because it's not fair that local food is expensive, but we can't ask farmers to lower their prices. So this is something that we're trying to figure out actively. And it's, it's, it's a passion of mine, so I would definitely have fixed income people on my mind, no matter what we're doing. Thanks.
Thank you, Lindsay. Hopkins, you are up next. Mr. Hopkins, Seth?
Thank you for that question. And yeah, the folks who are on fixed incomes, those are folks that I see regularly at organizations I belong to, and they're not too bashful about letting me know when they think that the town ought to be doing a little bit better job keeping an eye on spending, trying to drive spending down. So this, this is something that we at the select board level probably deal with every two weeks when we have a select board meeting, is we, we comb through the warrants, we get them on Friday, and we make sure that we're spending the taxpayers' money in absolutely the most cost-efficient way that we can. I would point out, as sometimes gets lost in general discussion, that the property tax is very high and it's regressive. And anything we can do to get spending sort, to have revenue sources that we can spend that's not property tax-based, that's a good thing. I was one of the leading proponents of the local option tax, the 1% tax. That was one of the first things we did as a select board when I got on the select board. We asked the voters for it. The voters said yes. And that's been salted away to pay for segment six, and it will now assist us in paying for other capital improvements around the town, which is what the voters directed us to do. But I would say also that only a third of your property tax bill is really under the town's control. And that, you know, we need in Vermont, a statewide solution. This is not gonna happen at the Brandon Select Board. We need a statewide solution to education funding. We have a very, very complex educational funding system that is not transparent. And when we vote, when we vote on town meeting day for our school budgets, the direct impact on our tax bill is not readily apparent to really anybody. So I, I think that, you know, those are things that we can work on at the state level. I, I am proud of what we've done at the town level. We've kept a rein on spending. I've been involved with the writing of six of the, six budgets, six of the last years, and two years before that on the Budget Committee. And I think if you look back, you'll find that the average budget increase was in the 1% to 2% range almost every one of those years. You know, we're trying very hard to stretch the dollar absolutely as far as we can. And one thing, I'm not sure whether it could work in Vermont for fixed income people or not, it's worth an idea, is, is a work-off program for small amounts of property taxes. My, my mother does that in her town in Massachusetts. She goes and volunteers, and there's some certain things that get done at the police station, the town hall, the library, the highway department, and you can kind of work off some of your property tax bill. I don't know that the legislature would authorize us to do that or not authorize us to do that. And I'm not looking to have like a poorhouse or a workhouse full of people who can't pay their property taxes. It's not where we're going. I'm just offering it as maybe that's a solution that we could offer toward the municipal part, which is the third of the property tax bill that we do control.
Thank you. Let me see. I was trying to get your attention with the sound. Oh, yeah. It's the first time we've had anybody go over. Congratulations. So moving on, we have Ally Breyer. Ally Breyer, you answer this question. You have last crack at this question.
Great. Yeah, I think as Lindsay and I mentioned, the piece about equity is hugely, hugely important. And so that is like a two-pronged piece, right? We need to attract more people here if we're able to have more affordable housing, have more housing options, because that will create a larger tax base. um because that will um create a larger tax base. And as I said, I think it's hugely important for Brandonites to be able to age in place. Um so that's not only having, you know, safe infrastructure to be able to walk on and use, that also means that they can affordably live here and age in place. Um and so, you know, as Seth had mentioned, the property tax is regressive, which is interesting because in other states it is not. But Vermont has so much um land and housing that ends up being passed down, which ends up being a huge burden when the property taxes are increased for people. So we really need to be thinking about progressive revenue generating taxes. Um and so, you know, I think that would require a deep look at all of our current tax taxes that we currently have in town and thinking about how we can make them more progressive. Uh and I think that is a huge undertaking, but it feels hugely important too. Um and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. And that is the end of question number five. Moving on to questions that we have. Next question. Please define the term equity from the lens of a select board member. And this question goes to Brier, then Hopkins, then Markowski, then Burke.
Yeah, I, you know, I think about this as my role as a um, I do pedestrian safety advocacy for the health department. And in my role there and in my role as a community and regional planner, um really what I've learned is that when we plan for those who experience any sort of physical, emotional, social, economic vulnerability, we're benefiting the entire community. So I think about equity in terms of, oh, one, we have to be thinking about programs from different lenses and thinking about them with a different lens than we would be. So that means, I think, partially is engaging the community, engaging different parts of the community. And um and really thinking about it in the terms of like equity is beneficial to everybody and everyone in town. And I also think, you know, I think I'll actually leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Next up, we have Mr. Hopkins.
So I I think that defining equity uh in terms of fairness is basically, you know, how I look at equity. I understand that equality of opportunity does not always translate into equity of result and that that's what the equity discussion in my mind generally is. I think that, you know, moving as much as we can in a direction where people are able to achieve equity equitable results with each other is 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 clearly the direction that will make us a happier community. I feel like on a big level, you know, we have had this kind of hollowing out of the middle class and you can see it in Brandon, you know, like you can see it in many communities. You can see um folks at the at the extremes in the same way that we see the um, I see people in hospitality work in the same way, you know, hospitality properties, like the big resorts in Vermont do well, the Airbnbs do well, that middle of the road country end that kind of we've looked at in Vermont as being the trademark, that's kind of the middle class of that. So I I think in many ways, it's being responsive, it's being it's reacting with alacrity to the way the economy is moving. And so I will take every step I can to ensure that people have equality of opportunity and I hope that those translate into equity of results.
Uh thank you, Seth. Uh next up, we have Mike Markowski.
You know, I'm actually gonna um kind of echo what Ally had had mentioned. Equity is beneficial for everyone in town. And not everybody in just Brandon, but it would be nice to see, say, virgins come and be envious of us and ask us how we accomplish something, you know, that in my mind, that's kind of an act. That's equity in my mind. Uh when you're able to to hold something to offer to to help to another town, you know, when they, when they become kind of envious of what you're doing and they become inquisitive on how we can do better and I mean, to me, not only does it benefit the townspeople, but it benefits the surrounding areas also.
Thank you, Mike. And last up, we have Lindsay Burke.
Sure. So equity I would define as making space for everyone to feel comfortable and providing acts equal opportunities and resources for everybody, making people feel inclusive as a select board member. Um it's not just creating seats at the table, it's creating new tables for people uh and respecting those tables. And uh an example of this is the new RNESU's District Equity Group, which I was recently invited to join. Uh and this is a group, diverse group of stakeholders, students, faculty, parents, community members. Uh and they approached me to join because of my interest in equity and my experience facilitating social justice focused groups. So it's 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 a complex topic, uh and I'm glad we're having this conversation um at a townwide level and we should be doing it statewide and federally. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh moving on, before we start with the next question, I've got a few more questions in the queue. I would just like to make sure everybody who's showing up for the water board thing because Bernie was wrong, I was right, let it be known. I knew this was going to go longer than an hour and I was right. So Bernie, I was right. So anybody that's here for the water, the water board, uh I don't know, with the the water superintendent, uh that's going to happen after, if you have a few more questions to get through for the select board. Next question, this will be answered in the order of Burke, Markowski, Brier, Hopkins. Um there's a Dollar General looking to come to Brandon. What do you think of this? Burke, you are up first.
I'm I'm unmuted. Okay, great. This is a great question. As somebody who's focused on the local economy, I've read the data that shows how negative, how negatively effectively, negatively affecting a Dollar General is on towns in rural areas across the country. I also understand, and I've talked to people who want the Dollar General here because they need access to things that they can't find in town, that they have to go to Rottland or Middlebury to find. And I hear that too. So I think we could attract perhaps a five and dime that's locally owned where the money stays locally and people are paid fair wages instead of relying on a corporate, out of state huge company who's going to come in and the money is going to go out of the the out of the community. There's research that shows when money is spent locally and stays locally, the towns do better. We do not want to bring in these multimillion dollar corporations, even though I I do hear that we do need certain things sold in town, but I think there's other ways we can be creative about attracting those businesses um or perhaps create incentives for local people to create those businesses right here. So my, my opinion would be that we should not try to court those bigger businesses and try to seek alternatives that are still meeting the needs of our local people.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next up, we have Mike Markowski.
You know, like, like Lindsay said, I mean, there's, there's good points and there's bad points. I mean, um sometimes, especially we're talking affordable link, uh affordable living, Dollar General or 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 one of those substores could be a huge benefit to to people with lower incomes. I mean, not everybody can afford to go to to places in town to get their goods. Um and that's a huge benefit to them. Um and then again, on the bad point, I mean, it does have negative impact on on the mom and pop shops that we've relied on for so long here in town too. So there's, it could be a a beginning of a huge debate, no matter how you look at it.
Thank you, Mike. Uh moving on, uh with Brier.
I would definitely echo with what both Lindsay and and Michael said. I think there's so many um issues with Dollar General and how they prey on local communities um and take dollars away from our local local economies. Um and the idea that we would have it right outside of our town, which would just lead to more sprawl um into a beautiful view shed of the of the Green Mountains. So I wonder um, you know, about that. And also, as as they both mentioned, there's a desire for um being able to purchase things at a Dollar General that you can't get at other places. So I do love the idea of creating incentives for, you know, a a local owner to do something like this. And or, you know, there's the idea that Dollar General finds a space in our downtown and and plugs in there. It's a, it's definitely a contentious issue and I think that there's, um I can definitely see both sides of it. It's it's definitely tricky.
And thank you, Ally. And I'll just let everyone know, I'm not going to be accepting any more questions. So we have, according to my count, we have one, two, three questions left and that is it. So if you send in questions now, it will be for the Prudential Board, not the Water Board. The Prudential Board. Um but I digress. So moving on, the, we're getting back up to the top of our order. The way this is going to be, it's going to go Burke, Brier, Hopkins and Markowski on this next question. And this is, what can be done to lower traffic speed at the edges of the village? Today, twenty-five miles per hour start quite a distance after the village border. Uh any ideas on how to make the streets safer for walkers, bikers and drivers generally? So that's kind of, you know, how do we make it safer and walking with with now? And I forget to let Seth, I did, I did forget to let Seth answer that question in my excitement to uh get through to the wa- uh to the Prudential Board. Seth, go ahead and answer the dollar store question, please.
Sure.
It's going to be over you.
Sure. Thanks, Phil. No worries. So um I I want folks to know that the select board doesn't court businesses and it wouldn't be appropriate for us to court businesses. I've heard only about the Dollar General in the con, not in any official context, but in the context of, you know, the local rumor mill, which is fine, that's, that's the way news happens. I do think that the select board and the community generally, but the select board in particular, has, it has some tools that it can use, like tax stabilization uh to encourage folks to, you know, redevelop existing in-town buildings. We've had that used to some success and that's, that's been good for infill in the downtown. But we don't really have a lot of incentives beyond that to offer or to um to to offer to a local person who's trying to create a dollar store or trying to create a general store kind of thing. And I guess I would just, um I would just kind of like you to step back and think about, you know, the select board can and I think does a pretty good job at setting the scene as well as it can, setting the stage as well as it can for independent people and independent businesses to make their own decisions based on what they think, you know, the market needs and and they will make decisions that will, they'll come to Brandon or they won't come to Brandon based on whether they think the community can support their business. So I I think that it's not really the board's place to say that the, a certain store, a certain brand shouldn't be in Brandon. It's our, it's our place to say, or it's the town's place to say, you know, we have certain standards that that we expect that you'll you'll abide by when you come to town in terms of building, in terms of zoning, in terms of traffic, in terms of other things. But I think in general, you know, we're talking about a board that doesn't have as much authority as some folks might think and I'm glad that the board doesn't have that kind of authority.
Uh thank you, Seth. And I apologize once again to everyone for my mistake. It doesn't happen very often. Plan on not making it happen again. So moving on to the question, again, the order will be the same, Burke, Brier, Hopkins, Markowski. What can be done to make the village safer, to make the streets more walkable for bikers and for drivers? And it's going to start with Burke.
This is a real question that's uh in in living color, as they say. Um my mom lives on South Franklin Street and she's actually had to go to the police department a few times to to complain about the the speeding trucks that are coming down Route seven because she's got neighbors whose kids are constantly crossing crossing the street and their dogs, and she just does not want to see them hit. So this one strikes pretty close to home. Um I think there's a lot of things we could do. We could lower the speeding limit, uh right? I mean, it it doesn't hit twenty-five until you're already past quite a lot of houses on Route seven. So we could further out the twenty-five signs. We could do more flashing signs that kids live here, you're entering a town, slow down. Um some people in our survey uh were asking about certain um requiring trucks to not break a certain way so they're not even, so the noise pollution isn't as bad. I mean, the people living on Route seven are very vocal about this problem. There's those turtles that you might have seen around different towns, where you put out the little turtles, where there's kids living there. I think those are pretty awesome. Um and then another thing that came up in our surveys was the need to improve our sidewalks. And I know sidewalks are expensive, but if we want to create a safe town for pedestrians, especially young families with kids um or older folks who take longer to cross the street, then the pedestrian walkways really need to be enforced. People need to stop when there's pedestrians there. I walk around downtown all the time and cars don't stop. Um so just enforcing, enforcing the pedestrian walkways and slowing down the speed limit. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ally Brown. Oh, I muted you there. I got so excited about hitting the button. Okay.
Got it all ready to go. Um this is a great question. I love this question. Um so this is definitely a passion of mine. The thing about speed limits is like the the higher we get, each five miles an hour, get the higher likelihood that people will die. So it's really important that we think about not only slowing it down from twenty-five to even twenty. They say that you save way more lives from twenty-five to twenty. Um so it's pretty amazing um to think about what we could do to to really make our streets even safer. Um some s- speed bumps. Um again, these are expensive, but we can start thinking creatively about grant funding using the one percent tax now that uh section six is is pretty much complete. Um speed bumps are hugely important. Um there's some, a really great, whoever designed it on um on uh, why am I blinking? It's not Union. It's right by Walgreens. I don't know why I'm blinking right now. But they did a a big traffic calming measure, which is that big kind of circle bubble. So those are amazing. I'd love to see more of those. Um and some ideas that have been, we've been kind of tossing around are the ideas of murals. And there's also studies that show that if you have murals on crosswalks, that these can actually slow down streets. Um and so that would be a really fun idea, a great way to engage the artists in our community. Um and I think, you know, as much as we can do education before we have to go to the um pulling people over stage would be fantastic. So um kind of all these creative ideas to think about how to slow down our streets.
Thank you, Ally. And moving on to Seth Hopkins.
Yeah, so I think that everybody would say that the town has done some pretty, we've made some pretty big strides in terms of pedestrian safety with the redesign of segment six. And I would just say that, again, um, you know, that that design was done by engineers and federal highway and V-Trans, and those are basically where they're going to allow us to have crosswalks. I don't think they're going to allow us to drop in more crosswalks because we have to remember that that's not just our road, it's it's the major traffic corridor on the west side of the state. And I I think it probably does depend a little bit on your personal experience or or who you've been talking to, but I live downtown, I walk my errands downtown all the time, and I've always felt like people do stop, people are courteous. I like in the summertime when we can put the little things in the middle of the crosswalk that say yield to pedestrians. I think that does help calm the traffic. I know that um the town does have at least two, I believe it's two flashing uh signs, like your speed is this and this is the speed limit, and those are ready to go. I think that there's a, you know, weather related at this point in terms of selecting the location. But my understanding is that it's supposed to be one at the north end and one at the south end of town on Route seven. So and in terms of lowering the speed limit, again, I think you might find that the select boards are allowed to have, we're allowed to set speed limits between certain numbers. And I think the low number is twenty-five. I don't think we're allowed to set a speed limit below twenty-five miles an hour. So we have the designated downtown, we can set a fifteen mile speed limit on some portion of that, and we have. Um but you, we'll have some limitations that we have to work in because pedestrian safety is important, bicycle safety is important. I run bicycle tours for a living. I'm very aware of bicycle safety concerns. Um but there's also the need to coexist with commerce and emergency traffic that's going to be using Route seven, which is the major traffic corridor on the west side of the state.
Thank you, Seth. And Mike Markowski.
Uh pedestrian safety, I mean, everybody's got to understand, safety comes at a cost, like like Seth was saying. To do something on Route seven, it has to go to engineers. Um that that is a state-owned highway, it's town-managed, but state-owned, so anything done to that road has to be gone through, engineered, approved by by the state, stamped, and then we got to come up with the funding to do it. Um, you know, on Park Street, we put in a wider road, smoother road, bike lanes, uh put in new crosswalks there. And and that's, that's worked out. And that's worked out great. I've seen a handful of bikes on them so far, but it is that time of year that nobody's riding bikes. But, yeah, I mean, there's only so much you can do, especially in a downtown area such as Route Seven, because Route Seven is our downtown. I mean, we're kind of restricted by the state as to what we can and can't do on that highway.
Thank you. And that is the end of question number eight. Moving on to question number nine. If the Select Board salary increases salary for an animal control officer, starts marketing the town and builds new sidewalks, the budget will go up. So are there items in the present budget that you feel that should be removed to make changes you are suggesting still have affordable property tax? This question will go Breyer, Hopkins, Markowski, Burke.
Great. You know, I think we can start by looking at our police budget. If we're talking about increasing salary for an ACO, we have one of the biggest police forces for a town of our size in the state. So we can think about, especially looking at some of the calls that they get, looking at the report that the police chief puts together. It seems like we can rethink some of the money that's going into the police. It seems like a lot of it is going to social work calls. So it would be great if we could hire an actual social worker on the police department instead of having a police officer. And I'd love to see some of that funding be directed to the ACO. And as Lindsay mentioned, the marketing piece that she had brought up was almost all grassroots and wouldn't be highly expensive. The new sidewalks, as I had mentioned, there's the 1% funding that seems like could go towards infrastructure. And again, I think that there's opportunities to think creatively about this. Thanks.
Thank you, Ally. Next up, we have Seth Hopkins.
So one of the rules of thumb that we use when we write the budget is that our budget's about $3 million. So every $30,000 in our budget means one more percent, one more point added to your property tax. So when we're trying to control the town budget, and it looks like we're going to have an increase of 2%, and we wanted to get it down some, we need to find $30,000. So if we're talking about increasing salary for animal control officer or marketing or new sidewalks, yes, the budget would have to go up. I think that we have run a very lean budget in Brandon in a number of years, for the last number of years. I think that with the marketing, we do have opportunities, and we've had recent success in collaborating with both the Brandon Chamber of Commerce and the Rutland Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Brandon, the DVA Downtown Brandon Association, things like the Killington Valley Initiative. So like those kinds of things for marketing Brandon, and those have been ways for Brandon to get more bang for its buck in terms of marketing. Sidewalks would be a good candidate for using the local option tax, as that's an infrastructure capital thing.
Thank you, Seth. Next up, we have Mike Markowski.
You know, I think this is more of a question that not one single person can answer on their own. This could open up a whole big debate through the board, as to what can be cut, what can't be cut, what monies can be moved around, and what can't. So I don't know of any one line that you should take from right now, but that's, that would have to be a discussion with the whole board together.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on.
Yeah, I echo what Mike said. I would like to be well-informed before making big decisions like that, and it does take the whole team of Select Board to talk about it, and also engage taxpayers. So maybe we do surveys of the residents and see what they want, see what's important to them. As Ally mentioned, free marketing, I mean, this technology online right now makes it really easy to do this stuff for free. And I'm sure we could buy volunteers to do it. I mean, I would do it for free. And there's fundraising. We can write grants for some of these things. Money is available. And I know we already, Seth just talked about how the sidewalks could be covered, and I just want to circle back to the last conversation. I mean, we're talking about Route Seven is not Park Street. Park Street is not Route Seven. Those are two very different streets when we're talking about safety. And I think everybody can vision the differences on those two roads. And the quote that safety comes at a cost, what do lives cost? I mean, I think if the town says that we need, if our community members say that we need more sidewalks, because they don't feel comfortable walking their children, to me, that's worth finding the money to do the sidewalks. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Lindsay. And moving on to our next question, because I got everybody that time, we have just two more questions. I know it's going to be three. We have two more questions. Somebody else snuck one in, and I will allow, nobody else sent anymore. Explain what a noise ordinance would look like if you were a Select Board member. This goes Hopkins, Markowski, Burke, Breyer.
I'm going to be very, very cautious before I get behind a noise ordinance. I am open-minded at this point. I understand that there are concerns in the community. I think that we need to hear all those concerns, and we need to balance those concerns with both people's rights to enjoy their property, people's rights to enjoy their livelihoods, people's rights to enjoy their hobbies. I'm very open-minded. I'm not saying I'm not going to vote for a noise ordinance. I'm not saying I will vote for the first noise ordinance that comes across the board's desk. This is something that came to us kind of in a little bit of a circuitous manner. I don't think there was any motion on the board. There wasn't an initiative on the board to, let's attack a noise ordinance right now. It came to us indirectly. I feel that there is enough, there is enough concern in the community that we need to at least address it. But I think this is going to need to be a slow and methodical process where we do a lot more listening, and there will be several hearings, I'm sure.
Thank you, Seth. Next up, Markowski, Michael.
Yeah, I'm going to basically mimic what Seth just mentioned. I mean, this is a very touchy subject for a lot of people in town. Yes, I understand there's noise, you know, in town, but you're never going to eliminate the loud exhaust, the random backwoods country gunfire, because somebody's always going to do it. You can force it, but I don't see how you're going to actually ever stop it. But, yeah, like Seth said, this is a very touchy subject for a lot of people. So again, this is, this is a huge, huge discussion for the board as a whole to have.
Thank you, Mike. Lindsay Burke, you are next.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what other community members think. I don't think this should be made, this decision would be made in a vacuum. I think this would take the whole town to come together and talk about what the specific noise issues are and how they're affecting people. I would like to say that noise pollution is not an abstract. There is data that shows that it affects people's mental and physical health, and it's very much a source of equity. So people that live in more crowded spaces do get affected by noise pollution more than people that live in their own homes and big white streets. So I'd like to look at what other towns have done and see what's successful. I'm definitely not an expert in noise ordinances, but I wouldn't be against it. I think maybe we would figure out times of day, weekends, what are we talking about? What's the specific machinery? Is it dogs? What is it? So I think I would need more information before making the decision.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next up, Ally Brown.
Yeah, this is a great, great question. It's something that has been coming up. And attending the recent Select Board meetings, it did sound like, what I was hearing was, I, this isn't a problem that affects me or the people I know. Yet, when we've talked to people in the community, we've heard that businesses have left or considered moving because there's no enforceable noise ordinance. There's, there's issues with explosives being shot off all times of night. There's music that can play anytime at night or during the day that is impacting people's quality of life. I would echo that we would need to have some community listening sessions on this, because it is an issue that has not been, I think, addressed from all sides or all perspectives, and I'd really love to hear more from people in town about how noise has impacted their life, and if it's increased or decreased their quality of life, I think it's important to hear that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ally. And we move on to our last question. So this will go, order will be Markowski, Burke, Breyer, Hopkins. What experience would you bring to the board when drafting a budget? Mike Markowski, you are first.
Well, drafting a budget, as some of you may know, I've spent the last three years on the Prudential Board for the Fire District, and that's something we do every year, is draft a budget for that particular entity. So with that, I mean, and I handle financials at work, my family's company. So I mean, it all rolls into, you know, I know how to budget for a town. I've worked with Ray Counter and others on the Prudential Board doing this for the last three years.
Thank you, Mike. And next up, Lindsay Burke.
Sure, yeah. I've got quite a lot of experience with budgets as well. When I was working in the corporate world, I managed multimillion-dollar advertising budgets. As my role is as Executive Director of Acorn, I manage multiple budgets for different programs. Some are small, local tour-to-farms, biking farm tour. Some are larger, the pharmacy food-as-medicine program with multiple stakeholders. And through, and managing my own business, Origins of Food, International Study Abroad Tours, that's working with universities with large insurance policies. I've learned to be super careful with budgets, and I know how to be thrifty without sacrificing quality. So I bring a lot of experience with budgets, and I'm not scared around an Excel spreadsheet.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next up, Ally Breyer.
Yeah, in my, in a previous position, I worked for the City of Eugene in Oregon. I worked as a waste prevention analyst for almost four years and managed all the budgets for the program. This included our curbside composting program, which was citywide, so I drafted and created and managed that budget. I had ran huge events in that town of over forty volunteers and forty fixers. They were called Fix-It Fairs, and we had over four hundred people would come to these events. They were the largest in the world for these types of events, and we would have to be in charge of managing all the budget for this, including all the paint of the fixers, all of the supplies, and all those types of things. And so that was the main role that I did there with waste prevention, was a big part of it was managing the budget for the programs. Thanks.
Thank you, Ally. So at this time, I did allow, we would do closing, oh, sorry. I know, I promise I'm not doing a purpose of. I'm looking at that clock. Seth, you're up.
Okay. So my wife and I have for sixteen years run our own tourism business, and she and I are responsible for all aspects of that, and that was kind of an early budget experience for me. I have also been treasurer for a couple of different churches. I've been treasurer for the Chamber of Commerce and assisted the Brandon Area Chamber of Commerce in its budget development for a number of years. But I guess the, you know, the easiest thing I could point to shorthand-wise is you should have had this book in the mail to you at some point this week. And that's the eighth Brandon budget that I've been part of writing. And I do recognize, I am not the guy who writes the budget. This is a collective, shared experience of leadership. I've been, I was two years on the Budget Advisory Committee and now six years on the Select Board. But the process has really become, it's become a testimony to working with other people and collaborating with each other in a civil and respectful way. I'm very, very pleased. I think there was a couple of people from our Budget Advisory Committee on this call tonight, and I think they would tell you that the process over the last number of years has become very respectful, very professional, and it's greatly improved over the way Brandon used to build its budget. So I'm proud of it. I think that we've built responsible budgets, and I'm glad to have been part of it. And I do love my fellow Select Board members, even though in my very first year, they threw the budget at me. Here, you got on the board in January, you can present the budget to the town meeting in March, and it's been that way ever since.
Thank you, Seth. And now, the thing that I jumped the gun for, our closing statements. You have up to two minutes. You don't have to take it on. You take, just say goodnight. Whatever you think. You have up to two minutes. The order of closing statements will be Hopkins, Breyer, Burke, Markowski. Seth? Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. Thanks again to all who came tonight. Thank you for your questions, and thank you for listening to all of our responses. As we get ready to vote, one of the things I'm struck with is the thought that civility, which among other things means being able to disagree without being disagreeable. It's not the natural human condition, right? It's not the default situation, and it's certainly not that way in our country right now. But we have civility. We had civility tonight in this candidate forum. We have civility at Select Board meetings. We have civility in our town here in Brandon, and we will have possibility because we have civility. As long as people of goodwill treat each other with goodwill, we're going to be okay, and Brandon's going to be okay. May it ever be so among us. Thank you for considering me as a candidate for reelection. I would value the opportunity to continue in useful service to the town on the Select Board.
Thank you, Seth. Ally Breyer, you are next.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I want to thank everybody who showed up tonight. It's pretty amazing to see that, what, over eighty people came to, to learn more about Select Board candidates. That's really, really exciting. And thanks again to Bill and Bernie for putting on this event. I really enjoyed talking with everybody and the candidates and thinking about our future as Brandon. It's really exciting to think about all of the possibilities moving forward and how we can keep Brandon thriving, welcoming, and vibrant town. Again, I want to echo that. A vote for Burke and Breyer is a vote for an accessibility, inclusivity, and equity lens, a depth of experience in community engagement, communications, partnership building, budget management, leadership, and you'll have representation on the Select Board. I love this town, but that doesn't mean I can't want it to be better. As we think about the town we love, we can think about how we want to thrive moving forward together. We really encourage you to reach out to us anytime. You can follow us on Facebook or check out, I mean, since you've had not enough of us tonight, you can find us at BurkeBreyerBrandon.org. Thank you again, and we hope we can count on your votes on March second.
Thank you, Ally. Lindsay, you are up.
Great, thank you. Yes, I'd also like to thank everyone for coming tonight. This is really great to hear the different questions and what people are concerned about at this crucial point in time. I think we'll look back on this as a real big point of transition in our collective history. And also to Ally's point, if you would like to vote in advance, you should be getting your ballots soon. So make sure that, if you don't want to go to the polls on the second, you get your ballots into the town office before the first. You can drop them off or mail them in. So after working across three continents, my husband and I chose Brandon, Vermont as our hometown. We love the walkable downtown, the access to nature, and the small community feel. We love the library, Bill and Molly's Quiz Night, and the fun events at Town Hall. We know other new families will be pulled to Brandon for these very same reasons. So to move us forward, we should improve communication between our town's leaders and the amazingly engaged community groups and residents we have. Let's build relationships. Relationships move at the speed of trust. The world, our country, our culture, it's dynamic. Where we are today versus sixty years ago is very different. Brandon needs a welcoming, diverse Select Board with those who understand the desires and challenges of the millennial generation, the largest generation of young families. Ally and I want to keep moving Brandon forward with you. A vote for Burke and Breyer is a vote for all of Brandon. Check out our website, BurkeBreyerBrandon.org, and feel free to get in touch with us if you'd like to tell us what your vision for Brandon is. Thank you. Be well, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. And last, we have Mike Markowski.
I'd like to echo everybody else in thanking everybody for attending this tonight and for, Bill for moderating this whole operation. I'd like to echo everybody else and thanking everybody for attending this tonight and, uh, for, uh, Bill for moderating this whole operation. I know it hasn't been easy for you. Uh, all I can say is when you go to vote, um, vote for how you want. Don't, don't be influenced by, by word of mouth, by anybody else. Do your research, just like any other vote that you do. This is me. I'm a realist. I'm not, you know, I'm not hired to talk to. I'll give you my honest opinion. I'm not afraid to speak up when, when I see something go in our eye. So again, I just want to thank everybody that took time out of their, their night to attend us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And again, thanks to all our candidates. First of all, um, it's been fantastic. You guys have been respectful. You guys respect all the time, respectful of each other. I really appreciate that. I, I want to thank, of course, our, yeah, as many as 86 participants, I think. So this is, this is big. Yeah, there's, you know, I mean, it says a lot about our, our, how involved our community can be. Um, I want to let everyone know that we're going to post this, uh, this recording will be available. Uh, I'll get it up probably on the town YouTube channel. It'll actually be a really long recording because I think it's also going to encompass the Prudential Board, uh, uh, forum as well. Um, I want to remind everybody that ballots are being mailed to you guys. You should already have your town reports. You know, this meeting, we got informational meetings starting next week, Granite Fire District ones meetings, uh, February 23rd, 6:00 PM. And these are all virtual informational meetings. No business can be done from these meetings, but they are an opportunity to get information, presentations from the various boards, um, and a chance to ask questions. Granite Fire District meeting, uh, is on February 23rd at 6:00 PM by way of Zoom. Otter Valley Unified Union School District meeting is on February 24th, 6:30. Um, and then town meeting, which again would be our normal traditional in our town meeting that we do in person at the Town Hall is being done virtually. Um, and again, no business will be done through a floor. No business can be done from the floor during this time. There'll be a presentation, including a presentation about the bond. That's on Monday, March 1st at 7:00 PM all by way of Zoom. All the information is available on the town of Brandon, uh, website and all over the place. Um, if you need it, be on Facebook, Trump Watch Forum a bunch of times, um, and you can always reach out to anybody in town. Um, again, thank you guys for coming out. Thank you again, candidates. You did a fantastic job. I mean, we live in a great town. You all are great people. And with that, I'm going to hand over power, as much as it pains me, to Bernie Carr.